Firehouse stuff's been deferred, the Mariner Center stuff's been deferred till next year. Everything else for this year is, if it's not completed, it's at least started.
Surprisingly, I find myself in the different chair this morning. So I'd like to call a meeting to order, please. Ask Linda to ensure a record of attendance. And also, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest?
Not yet. Maybe not.
The next item is the approval of the agenda with any possible additions or deletions.
So, second.
Jeff, please.
Good, good news. Good news. Well, actually, not, not great news, but we don't have the grants to organizations spreadsheet calculations done for today, so if we can defer that to next week's committee of the whole, we can deal with that there. So, just that one, one removal from the agenda.
With that, by Jeff, a call for approval of the agenda. Question, second, now, question, question being called, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, A, under business, a ferry readiness. Is that... I didn't know where I was, sorry about that. Committee of the whole, thanks, Jeff. So, there's no...
Sorry, Jeff, don't get me started.
Just give me, just give me a pill.
I saw you around here, you know.
Ah, dear. Grants to organizations, as Jeff has just mentioned, that's, we're postponing that. B, priorities.
I, you know what I'm hearing, is I only read one, one piece of this on the internet, so I didn't go through.
Okay, they're...
I don't know why I did.
They're, they're gonna go through it when we get to that, yeah. Okay? So, the priorities, and a week or so, a couple of weeks ago, I circulated a memo, and I've asked Linda to provide a hard copy today, and it's with regard to the, the workshop that we did together a couple of weeks ago regarding priorities. And so, what the, what the memo said is that there were four items that emerged significantly to the top of the, of the scoring that each of, each of you as councillors submitted. And those items are identified there in, in the memo. So, the next step for this, if, if you're accepting of that, of that process, is that these will be circulated to the, to the directors and the managers, and asked for them, for them to indicate to, to us how their programs and projects align with those four priority areas. And that information will be available to you in your budget process. It is not the sole decider of what, what gets included and what doesn't. It just creates another filter for you guys to use when you're trying to make decisions, and we expect there will have to be some decisions in the, in the budget process. So, again, we're creating a, a list for you, a lens for you, so that you'll be able to, to apply it to your decisions, fiscal and otherwise.
Any comments or discussion or question of Jeff or others? Danny?
Thank you, your worship. Acting your worship.
Thank, thank you again, Danny.
Your worship full, yeah. Jeff, the items here that are, they're highlighted on my paper, the first three, and they're capital items, and they're the public works capital items, replace multi-purpose tractor, asphalt planer attachment for multi-purpose tractor, asphalt recliner, hot patching, and off-season. Is that one of the four, or one of the five, or is that part of the wish list from the, from Dave?
Thank you. Actually, sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't clear. You're, you're looking at the long sheet?
Yeah, what are we looking at, this sheet?
We're looking at this sheet.
Oh, we're, we're not that far yet.
No, no, you're, you're ahead of me.
Don't look ahead of the curve.
Nope, that's fine. The four things I was referring to are the four items identified in the, in the letter size memo, and they are growing the tax base, saving money, reducing lifecycle costs of infrastructure, and long-term infrastructure plan, right? More an open inviting community, and being more efficient in administration and governance. So, those were the four things that you, as a, as a group collectively identified as most important. Okay?
Ken?
Thanks, Jim. Looking at this list, and you, Jeff mentioned, is going to send it to department heads, I can see the save money one definitely would work. The growing the tax base, I don't know how on earth we're gonna pull that one off. I know there's ways we can do it, and I think one of the ways is that we've got to become more friendly, shall we say, to new business coming in. I don't think anyone around this table has not heard stories about how we're not the easiest town to deal with in setting up new business. And I don't know what the, the solution is here, but I really feel that we need to somehow encourage our staff, especially in the development office, to try to work closer with businesses who want to come in to the community, you know, very proactive. To me, the, the word that never should be used in this building is no. It should be yes, we can do this, and this is how we can do it. And just on the weekend, in fact, I've asked the gentleman to send me details of his plight, but I had a fellow contact me on Saturday who wanted to set up a business in Yarmouth. He sat, since, set up in the county because he said there's so much red tape in town. It took him a year and a half, and he gave up. He said, to heck with it, I'm just gonna locate out in the county, and that's where he went. And he said it was done in 30 days, and I said, would you please send me details? I'd like to share that with our CIO as to exactly how this happened, you know, how did this business happen? And the business that he was involved in was automobile-based type of business. And he just had some barriers that were created for him, and I don't know how we can get around these barriers. I, I'm not on the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, and I'm kinda happy I'm not. And, but again, I got a call last night from a very angry individual who apparently, and I know nothing about this, who wanted to set up, or somebody wanted to set up some kind of a food-based business down on the waterfront, and again, no, you can't do that. And to me, if anyone wants to set up a business of any kind in this town, I mean, that's the only way we're gonna grow this tax base. We're either gonna have to decide as a town, I'm glad there's no media here, we're either gonna disperse the air screaming, I never thought of that. However, the, the, I mean, if we're ever gonna grow this town as a tax base, we've got only two ways to go, residential or business. Ideally, a nice combination of both would be ideal, but the way we are growing right now, we're going residential, and unfortunately, with our residential assessments dropping, it's not a very proactive picture. So, we really have got to, that number one, grow the tax base, and I'm full-heartedly behind that. We really have got to look, and, and I hate to throw it on the CIO's shoulders, but it's more of a, a, a top level to say, okay, what can we do here to make this town more friendly for development? Like, how can we get this town more friendly? And again, it's Deputy Mayor McLeod with the PAC, like, how can we, we have already talked about cleaning up that, that whole planning advisory document that's not exactly a very proactive document, it's 25 years old. I was on council when the thing was drafted by Jim years ago. We need to clean that up. It's, it's a, it was built for a time that is gone. We have a time that we need growth. Saving money is something our department people can do, and again, sixteen, to me, number three is pretty well in tune with number, with number one, the growing the tax base and being more open and inviting. I mean, when you look at it, 41 points of our council went to those two items, which to me are related. And to me, is a message here, that we are saying, we wanna be, we wanna be open and inviting. I mean, when you look at, all of us around the table individually did this, we're all on the same page here, and contrary to some idiots out there who says that we're not working together, well, I disagree with that. Here's a good example of us all being on the same page, seeing our priority as this, and I think this is good. The efficient, that's an administrative thing that can be done. But then you go down to the next ones, a goal as a top five, then they go down to the next one, saving money, growing tax base, again, you see that, we're again, the, the frequency, the frequency is there. So, I mean, both are balanced, and I like how you did it, Jeff, because you could show not only was it a popularity contest, but it was also a, both are dependent on each other, it shows that they're very valid statistics. So, I just wanted to rant on that, because I'm, I was really taken aback that we've all come on the same page on this, and I think that's so good, and I think that's a strong message to our staff and to the community, that we really want to somehow get the ship going in the right direction. So, that's my morning rant. So, CIO wants to comment, or Jim?
Jeff?
Thank you. I, I'll just jump in for, for one second. And just, that's entirely what the exercise is about, from my point of view, is tell us what's most important, and we'll, you know, put a fine point on it, and that's what we'll work towards. We'll, and you have to give us ideas too, but you're absolutely right, the MPS Lub review is about that issue. It's about being, being open for business and being, growing the tax base, being more inviting. So, so, we're on the same page, and, and so, now that we've, that we've documented it, we've said what it is, let's work towards it.
I've got lights on the go here.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. And, you know, I thought the number one priority for myself is growing the tax base, and you look at how confined or constricted our community is geographically, and growing the tax base, we've done some nice work on the Milton property. Councilor Kazik over the last several years has always said, we gotta get the property that the town owns, if it's not crucial to our infrastructure, I mean, recreational facilities, we gotta get back in the hands of the taxpayers. And, and the number one issue I see is, is where we've gotten a little heat lately, and I've, I can take it as good as I can get, is the Kilham property. I don't believe that property should belong in the hands of the taxpayers, the town of Yarmouth. That should be, that should be on the tax roll. All you have to do is, is Councilor Langel said, is look at, look what we have in the town of Yarmouth that's not taxed. We're talking about, we're doing a refurbishment of the terminal, that's not taxed. School board building, even though we do grant and lose, we know at the Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, any properties that they own in the town of Yarmouth aren't taxed. There's a formula there, but we haven't seen any of that money. You know, the Dominion Textiles building, the YARC is under a clause through the legislature. The Art Gallery of Nova Scotia down here, the old bank, that was on the tax rolls. Our wharfs, you know, our prime piece of real estate in Yarmouth County is the Mariner Center property. That would be the probably, the most heavily taxed commercial, best commercial area in the town, in this county, and we don't tax it. You know, we have brownfields, we have the property on the other side of the old church here on Main Street. We have the property there where Bill Carter had his garage station, Stars Road, those aren't in the, those aren't in the tax. Yarmouth South, on the waterfront, those aren't taxed. We're gonna have to learn, and through the Town's Task Force, and I congratulate Councilor Langel for the work that he's done with Dave Corkum and Billy Joe McClain on the Town's Task Force, but if we could implement that through the infrastructure in Nova Scotia, and this new provincial government, I think that's a prime opportunity to get some of these properties back on the tax roll, because nobody wants to develop a property, take a brownfield, clean it out, do all the work to it, spend several hundred thousand dollars on it, and then the first thing you do is you get full taxes on it. There should be a graduated or laddered plan to get to, you know, five-year or 10-year plan where they pay full taxes on it. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be whacked right off the bat. So, growing the tax base is our number one concern. I think what you described, bringing business in towns, you know, we're, we're limited geographically in here, and we have to look at every dollar that we spent, and, and putting some of our properties back on the tax roll, I think is the best way to grow the tax base.
Thank you, your worship. Well, thank you, Councilor, Councilor Mooney, you've, you've said exactly some of the stuff that I was going to just bring up about that. But, and Councilor, Councilor Langel, I just want to tell you that the Monday night, I had my first, first inoculation of amalgamation with the two other units, and it wasn't good. Wasn't good at all. Really scary. Jeff, you were there, Jim, you were there. These are just my thoughts, my thoughts only. I could see things going around that table, and this is only one of them that happened about this particular person that come from out west, bought a home here, now is retired. His wife goes back to Calgary every year to work because she can't find work here. She wanted to get into this business since last year and this year, and she come up with, she has an opportunity, they had an opportunity, and they still have an opportunity to get into this, to this business, but it was shot down by the other two municipal units. The way I, it was a seven to five. And I, I can see that, I just had a vision sitting there saying, oh my God, this, this ain't good. This, this is not good. This is not the amalgamation that I would, would be thinking of or dreaming of, that you'd have different people in the municipal units telling you what you can and cannot have in the town, in the streets of Yarmouth. Not good. That's just my opinion. So, anyway, getting back to my other thought about creating more revenue. Jeff, we've had land, the town of Yarmouth, the taxpayers of Yarmouth, and I'm a taxpayer in the town of Yarmouth, we've been sitting on all this land, we have a map full of land. It's out there. There's no signs on any of it. The only way that they find out is they go to a real estate company and say, oh, yeah, we have land here, we have land there. We, we, we gotta, we gotta dream up, it's not hard, not hard to figure out. Sometimes people take the initiative, if you put too many signs around, then it means that, oh, the whole, whole, whole of Yarmouth is for sale. Well, you know what? We've got a lot of land that is for sale. We've got a lot of land on the, on the books that are not doing nothing, set in idle. We either have to talk to somebody that can sell this land that we have, or we have, we have, and either somebody would be preferably, hopefully, the provincial and federal government to start building affordable housing, or whatever. Maybe we could have a, a land lotto where people that are, make promises or commitments that they are, are going to build a house within a year, then we could help them by giving them some seed money, which would be in the land, in the, in the, the cost of, we'll give you this land for a dollar, just, just a thought. I don't know how we can do it. I guess, pretty much, we can do pretty much anything we want, or provincially or federally, as long as we get permission per, whatever. It's, it's just a thought. Either that, we're gonna be, the lands, they don't make land anymore, we're still gonna have this land. This land has got to go and be sold for taxes. We, we have lots of it, and we're getting more every day, every year. There's, there's houses that are coming up to be torn down, we're, we're taking possessions of them for, because we have to. And, and, and these, these pieces of land, they're just sitting there. They're sitting there for the last 25, 30 years. It's just, we have to come up with a different plan to put these, these lands back on the tax roll. I don't know how we do it, but I know there's a way. You, you can put a man on the moon, you sure to the hell can put, you can put this land up and have it sold. I mean, it, it's just, it, it just bothers my mind that it's, there's nice land out there, there's nice pieces of land. It should be, it's gotta be sold somehow. Anyway, that's just one of my thoughts.
Ken, would you let Jeff respond, and then I'll let you?
Thank you. Well, we've got something like 29 properties right now that we have in the hands of Realtor. He sold a few of them, as recently, the, the higher-valued ones. I've been approached over the years for three or four of the small parcels that I think you're referring to, and we, we went so far one time to have a, we, we thought we had an agreement with, with an adjacent property owner to buy it, to buy a small parcel of land for a thousand dollars, and when he found out he had to pay the legal fees to, to do it, he was not interested anymore. And that is always what happens in, in every one of these cases that I've dealt with, is that we are at numbers in that area, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, which is less than the properties owe us in terms of the cost that we've incurred, in terms of absorbing them at tax sale, maybe demolition costs and maintenance costs over the years, but a thousand or two thousand dollars for a, a serviced, developable lot in the town of Yarmouth doesn't sound like too much money. And we are restricted under the MGA of not being able to sell property below market. So, working with Department of Housing, there used to be programs where they would, where they would work with individuals, and, and the contribution from the town, you probably remember these days from your, from your earlier term on councils, that we would, we would stake a project basically by providing a serviced lot, and then they would come in and work with a eligible person to develop a single-family dwelling. Those programs, as far as I know, don't currently exist. So, there's two issues that, that council can deal with, policy issues that council can deal with around that. One is to, to advocate provincially with the Department of Housing that they reinstate a program like that, so that people can get out of rental situations into actually owning their homes, and municipalities could contribute serviced lots, towns could contribute serviced lots. The other is that section of the MGA that doesn't allow us to sell below market value. It does if, if the lot has no value to anyone except the adjacent property owner. It's pretty hard to argue that a serviced, developable lot in the town has no value except to the adjacent owner. So, if, if we can, if we can get the, one or two of those policies changed, it opens up more possibilities for us as, as a town to get those properties out of our hands and the liability associated with them, frankly, and put them in, in the private sector and have them developed.
Well, perhaps, you know, this is the group that we ought, we ought to take, I don't know, procedure, or maybe my, my friend here, could perhaps make that part of this question, question, you know, council or motion there, and perhaps we can be careful of all, because we have 29 properties that are, just, you know, that, that are on the ground, and if it's tax based, we can grow it and, and spare the, you know, the community for, for growing, it'd be great. Anyway, I agree with that.
Thank you, Danny. Ken?
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I'm, you know, my feeling on this whole issue. We really, we've been spinning our tires on this for three and a half years, and I think we're at the point now that we either have got to go to a provincial resolution. The Town's Task Force, as Phil mentioned a few minutes ago, we've put this, clearly identified this as a concern. We are seeing erosion happening of our tax base, simply because we have businesses that are locating on the fringe of our town. I mean, we have seen a huge growth in the Dayton and the Stars Road areas. I mean, they're, and along the Haley Road. I mean, people are right on our, our edge, but we have no tax benefits from them. On the other hand, we have huge bits of infrastructure, as Phil mentioned, I mean, I'm gonna be very honest, and probably people are gonna dumble over me for saying this, I would sell that land in front of the Mariner Center in a heartbeat, you know, especially it's on Stars Road. I'm sorry, I, I cannot believe that we're hanging on to that hunk of property for a parking lot, or we use it twice a year for a car show or some fool thing. That is prime real estate. We should be looking proactively of how we can move some of this property. The brown soil that we have, I know, and I suspect other municipal units have addressed this, by simply coming in saying, okay, guy, you got some brown soil, you screwed up. Reality happened here, a leaky tank, or leaky oil tanks, or gas tanks, whatever it was, or 27 years of abuse to the land. To leave prime bits of real estate on Stars Road, on Main Street, off our tax rolls, more or less, I mean, I know they're paying some tax on it, but we need that tax base. Is there some way that we can look at some kind of, an additional fee, an additional tax of some kind? If you're a brown soil owner and you're, you know, I'm thinking of three pretty pieces of property now in prime location, Stars Road, Main Street, and on the waterfront, that are sitting there, saying, okay, buddy, this land is generating our community nothing, it's, it's adversely affecting our growth, and it is. Therefore, for you to keep that, plus I'll throw in the one on Water Street too, I forgot about that one across from the cotton mill next to the snack place, you know, okay, you either clean this thing up, bite the bullet, or you're gonna have to pay an additional, I don't care, 20%, 25%, 30%, 100%, I don't care, whatever we can squeeze out. Additional taxes to the community is lost revenue to us, because I know what these people are doing, they're waiting for nature to take its course to clean up the mess for them, I think, I suspect, I don't know. And I don't know what the answer is for that. I really think we, and I agree with Danny 100%, we've got these hunks of property, and I've said many a time, and I know we're strapped by the MGA, and I wish we could get around that somehow and say, okay, people, I'd love to be able to have a land giveaway here in town, say, okay, here for a dollar, you can have this hunk of property on Main Street, if you will guarantee that you will erect a building there that's gonna give us a tax base of $200,000 for the next 20 years, great, it's yours, here, give us a dollar, it's yours. I'd love to see us do that. Dead-on with the Kilham building, that thing's gotta go. I'm sorry, folks, that is a white elephant. Give it back to Mr. Newell, thank you very much, life goes on, you know, or do whatever covenants we have to do. We have got to start saving money here. I mean, I'm looking at this capitalist, and I'm looking at, again, the South End, number 13, the decorative lighting, again, being put off, again, as it's been put off for 20 years. I'd love to see, I mean, we're, we're just not doing the work, you know, that we need to do in some parts of town, and I, I don't know what we can do here. But, we've got to start being proactive, and I know it's a huge challenge for the CIO and staff to figure out a way to do this. Maybe other units can do it, I don't know. I haven't, to be honest, delved into it enough, I think I'm gonna start though, I'm getting into my little delving, and to see, how can we proactively do it? But, I just wanted to echo what Phil and Danny were saying.
Thank you. There are, just to address the brownfield, the brownfield issue, there are, there have been successful projects, and there are programs through FCM, I believe, through the green municipal funds to, to address that. You know, we can, we can do some digging in there. The question is, 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 you know, you're talking about some projects, so the lands we're talking about, probably because of their environmental situation, have significantly less value than, than they otherwise could. So, you know, I, I talked to some of my colleagues and find out exactly how they've, how they've approached this, because, you know, you, you, it's not, you have to have a three-way partnership with this, some, some federal money, a private willing partner, and, and the municipality to, to pull it off, I sense. But let me, let me do a little investigation on that, ask some questions. If you make a motion of that effect, it'll get on the record, get on the list?
Seconded by Danny. Any more question or discussion? Question? Danny?
It's, it's not on this one.
Okay.
I'm, I'm ready for the motion raised.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
This was on a separate issue, your worship. It's, my question would be to Jeff. Jeff, you made a, a comment just a few minutes ago on the procedures that we would have to, to go through to get the province on board and the, under the, under the MGA, to change some, some ruling in how we, how we get rid of our cell land, or how we do things, or was it to get the, the municipal, not the municipal, but the provincial housing, housing program, perhaps, to see if we can talk to them, or whatever? Would that need to be a motion made? Or would you, would you repeat what you just said, or do you need a motion for that? I'm not sure, you know, so we can, we can get this thing on, on the roll? If, if we don't do something and ask the questions, we'll never know.
So, the, the two items I suggested, and it would be appropriate to make motions if you want, if you want them to be dealt with, first is, is, and, so the first one is, is around a housing program that would allow for a three-way partnership between an eligible person, the municipality, and the province to, to, to develop a single-family or even a duplex where they could own, own their half, ownership, homeownership.
And this is not new.
Well, it, it would be new, or it would be new again.
New again, yes, yes.
I think it's happened before, so, so there's two ways you can go with that, is you can go directly to the minister and, and ask the question, is there something in the works that we're interested in this sort of program? The other way to go is, is through UNSM to, you know, because it's not just an issue for the town of Yarmouth, I'm sure. So, if you have the collective will of, of all the municipalities behind a resolution. Unfortunately, the resolution opportunity doesn't come up until next fall, so maybe to have an initial discussion with the minister, or correspondence with the minister on it, and then follow it up with the UNSM.
Great, and that, 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 what I'd like to see, so... So, do you need a motion for what you just said?
Yeah, recommend to council to contact the Minister of Housing and ask about the possibility or any plans.
Direct staff to do that?
Yes.
Direct staff to contact.
Sorry, sorry, interrupt. If you're writing a letter to the minister, it should come from the mayor, not from the staff.
Okay, great, whoever's got to come through. So, Lynda, do you have that recorded there or not? You do?
So, you're looking to correspond with the Minister of Housing, asking about any programs that municipalities can participate in to convert vacant lots, vacant serviced lots into owner-occupied housing.
Okay, yeah, okay. And then we have to also, would we contact our assistant municipalities and ask them to get on board and ask them to spearhead a campaign to go to the UNSM and to the ministers? Because I'm sure there's a lot of other municipal units are in the same boat, we are with land and people that want to be able to build houses, affordable houses and that, and why couldn't this be a part of a province-wide?
It could. Maybe we should wait for the minister's response and if it isn't positive, you know, if there isn't something imminent, then to ask for support from our fellow municipal governments to lobby for a change.
Okay, okay. So, we'll wait for a response and then we'll act upon that response. So, in that motion, we can put that, on receiving response from the minister, we'll act upon it or we'll just act upon it when we get to it?
When we get to response.
Okay, so, Lynda, you have that motion? Do you want me to say it or can you repeat it?
We're okay with that motion moved by yourself, Danny. We need a seconder.
Okay, great.
A seconder, please.
Thank you, CAO.
Although, any more discussion and question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried.
The other possible motion you may want to consider on this was the other element, which was the MGA and the restriction around not selling property below market value. It's a little bit vague in terms of what market value is and it is a little bit difficult for us to do things, as the council suggested, like a land lottery or anything like that to divest the properties back into the community. So, it may be, again, a letter to the Minister of Service Nova Scotia identifying the issue, looking for a response in terms of any imminent plans to amend the MGA to make it easier.
Your Worship, what our CAO just suggested, that's a really good idea and I'm glad that you brought that up because it's a real good motion. So, Lynda, have you got that down?
I think so.
She thinks so? Okay. I mean, I'm glad that you're bringing this up, Jeff, because it needs to be brought up and you're thinking of it ahead of time and these are the motions that need to be brought forward to get this stuff done. If we don't ask the questions, we'll never know. We can sit around this table for meetings and meetings and meetings and not know the answer. At least we'll know under the MGA that it's clear enough from the minister to say either yes or no or maybe. So, that's great. So, we can, we'll wait for a response from the minister. So, I so move the motion that was brought up by the CEO suggestion.
Yeah, seconded by Ken. I'll set for, no, Sandy, I see, Sandy's going to speak up. Good morning, Sandy.
Morning. I just have a question. I don't know if we can do it, but some towns on their town site show a list of their inventory of buildings that are for rent, like storefronts, or land that's for sale, and then that way it's out there for people from away, they can look and see what's available in the town? Is that something that we could look at?
Properties for sale is, if they're MLS listed, that's really easy to do because Viewpoint does that and we can simply provide a link to that and anyone can go on there and see every property that's for sale, the asking price and so on, on that website. I use it frequently, actually, it's a pretty good site. So, that would be easy to do. Now, in terms of what's available for rent, that's a different question. We don't have that information and it would take a bit of an effort to get it. Now, I don't know if it's council's wish, we can look at the mechanics of that, how we might be able to do that.
It should be up to the landlord to put this on normal, right?
Right, I guess what I was suggesting is if there was interest, if there was interest, we could create a situation on our website where landlords could submit themselves, manage it themselves, as long as it doesn't take staff time, you know, to go chase that information, make a service available, if they want to use it, they use it and if they don't, they don't. We could look at that.
Well, I just think that it's a service that we're offering that people, like say somebody in Ontario decided they want to move to Yarmouth and start up a business, they can see what's available to them.
Jeff.
And the other thing, while I'm talking about the website.
Could I just about that?
Sure.
Just on that. There's a broader approach that's taken by a lot of municipalities for that purpose and it's to create a site selector section of the website. So, it isn't just about what property is available, but it provides information on the zoning.
Yes.
The regulations, whether it's serviced or not, how close it is to certain transportation links. So, it's a more robust presentation of information than just simply what is available because a piece of land is a piece of land or a building without, you know, a picture of a building without the real details of what you can do in that building legally.
Exactly.
Is not very useful. So, part of what we're undertaking right now with the RFP on the information thing is to start to create, I guess, a package that site selectors would be able to look at, not specific to private properties, but for the town of Yarmouth. In the big picture, if you're in Ontario looking at coming to Nova Scotia, unless you know Yarmouth, you know, it's just another community. So, we're trying to create the information package to say what's unique about Yarmouth or what's special about Yarmouth to bring your business here. The next level down is, okay, you've decided on Yarmouth or you're considering Yarmouth, show me where the properties are, where the buildings are, what the services are. So, what you're talking about is a level deeper than where we are right now, but we're moving in that direction for that reason.
Okay. And one more thing is, only because it's been brought to my attention, on our site, we don't have a search button. We do now?
It's that if you don't have the search.
Okay, so you can't tell, because a lot of people want it.
The word "search."
Yeah, put "search." Thank you.
Ken and then Phil.
Jeff, that real estate contract, how long do we have that for with, what's his name, Real Estate Store? Is that a yearly thing or what's going on?
I haven't looked at it, but I can pull it out.
Because I'm wondering where we're at with that. We're not seeing a lot of movement now. I realize that where property prices are kind of fixed, but again, I really, really think, we haven't really made that much of a push and it's kind of surprises me that we haven't earned anything for a spring workshop for UNSM either, but usually we hear by now if there's a spring workshop. But we really should look at talking to some of the other units to see where they are with this because I know a community such as Kentville, I know has been going through this, I know Wolfville has had some issues, communities such as Middleton and Digby, I don't know about Digby Town, but I know Middleton, I think, was having some issues similar to us where there was a lot of land, et cetera, et cetera. The reality check with us is, is that we are going to end up with, and we are ending up with, a fair chunk of empty lots and they're growing. I mean, as we have buildings come tumbling down, as they are come tumbling down, I mean, it's older buildings and we don't have the growth. We've got to somehow encourage growth on those empty lots. We also have, I suspect, and this is just a suspicion so we don't get in trouble, some property owners who are really hoping their building will come down so we'll clean it up for them. I mean, that's reality check and some of these buildings, I suspect, are quite sizable. And that's something that the taxpayer will pay because they know that it's going to cost a fair chunk of change to tear that building down and the town will step in with its bags of money and will help them out. Well, I think that's going to be something we need to plug that little gap as well, if at all possible. I really think we have to be proactive and almost look, where are we going to be five years from now with properties? Really, I look at our Main Street and I'm looking at one building where I have already alerted the CAO too and I'm concerned about the actual structure itself. There are some structures there that, there's going to be some empty lots and we've got to almost start looking at a vision to say, "Okay, what are we going to do with these lots or what are we going to do with these hunks of land?" We just sold a property on Main Street recently and I haven't seen a lot of progress there and I'm hoping in March there will be some, pardon?
Hasn't closed yet.
Hasn't closed yet? Oh, that's not good, okay. So, we haven't done a sale on Main Street. So, I mean, stuff like that, yeah, it's pending. So, we have to really start looking at it. So, I don't know, I'm concerned about that and maybe with this real estate, I realize the chap that's doing it for us now is doing a good job, but is there some way we can make his job easier? I don't know what the answer is there.
Thanks, Ken. Phil. Phil.
Just to comment on what Counselor Dennis was saying about the stock of properties, I think that'd be a great opportunity for the REN. I think that's probably one of their main things because like you said, they're not, you know, Yarmouth might be the area that they're looking at, but they might be looking at buildings that are in, you know, pubnicco or whatever. So, if we had an inventory of that, I think it'd be a great idea and I think that's something that the, that the new REN could probably do and I think it would be great for businesses that are looking for space, you know, homes, anything, so.
For businesses that are located outside of Canada or international businesses looking to come to Canada, NSBI is the face, I guess, for Nova Scotia out there talking to these businesses and trying to attract their investment to Nova Scotia. They're very much looking forward to working with the RENs as the next level. So, when a business says they want to come, if our REN, REN 1, our area is the area that sort of best meets that business's needs, NSBI needs to know what we have. And that is everything from services, transportation links, the whole thing, the whole thing. And so, the REN could very well play a role because they will be the next level connection. Obviously, if the REN takes the project on, they represent the entire area and you'll have a more complete picture of the assets and the opportunities for a business. So, I agree, that's a perfect project for the REN.
Thank you very much, everybody. Good discussion. Are we all set to move on to capital? Welcome, staff. Oh.
Was concerning the housing provision within the MGA?
You made the motion, I thought we didn't. And Sandy, oh, that's right, thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. It's a good wide-ranging discussion and I want it to be positive, even though it's tough out there, I'd like for it to be positive. So, we're all set for the discussion under C, which is capital. Jeff.
Great, well, I'll introduce the gentleman at the presenter's table and they're going to do the bulk of the talking on this issue. So, when we last met and did a little workshop on capital needs of the town, we had each of the directors come in and talk to you about the projects and the issues that they were facing. The direction to staff was to try and place those projects and needs on a timeline. So, Jerry and Dave worked diligently on that for the last little while and so I'm going to ask Jerry and Dave to walk you through this. And so, what our intention is here is that we talked about before, trying to get two things done before we get the general budget done. One is set the capital budget and the other is grant to organizations. So, our hope is that if we can settle on the timeline for these capital items before the March council meeting, that we would do an approval there for the 2014-15 capital budget as well as the 14-15 grant to organizations. So, with that introduction, turn it over to Jerry, Mr. Chairman.
Jerry, good morning.
Good morning. Is the mic on?
I thought it was.
I think we're good. Yeah, basically, we met there a few weeks back and all the directors came in and talked about different capital projects they'd like to see and town needs to get done, sewer projects, equipment replacement, had the chief in as well. So, we left that meeting, I left that meeting after listening to the conversations and getting the different lists from the different directors and basically tried to summarize it in some kind of fashion on a yearly basis. As you know, each director came in and just talked about everything that needed to be done. So, then we tried to, now I'm trying to fit it into our financial plan. So, just laid out the spreadsheet here and the first page basically is all kinds of equipment and sidewalk, different projects like that that fall under the Public Works Department. You'll see a highlight at the top, I tried to highlight some things that should be done or would be done together. So, if you're looking at the front page, items one, two and three, those would be kind of done as a unit, as one project, one thing. On the second page, I got into all the, basically sewer projects because there are a number of them and again, highlighted some different ones together, put them together so we'd know that these different sections would be done as one project.
Jerry, just a second, Danny has a question.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I have a question for Dave. And Dave, on this multipurpose, excuse me, tractor, I know there was some discussion at our meeting that we have and it's a great idea that you're getting this with all these detachments and everything, it's great. I've seen on ads, on TV, that some of these tractors that they have, I don't know, it's the one that you're looking in particularly, with the little back bucket and a front bucket, but also, these tractors also come with a mower that's attached to them underneath the garage for mowing lawns and whatever. They have them, they're in the market, it was on one of the TV programs. I don't know if this guy sells a mower or whatever, I don't know if it's a John Deere tractor, I don't know what it is, but it was there. Just hold on for just one second, I just want to see if we can, go ahead.
Just to sort of interrupt there, the, I think the tractor you're talking about is the one that we identified for the parks where this is like the trackless machine that we use on sidewalks for plowing and so on. It's not the one with the bucket and the backhoe.
Oh, this isn't one like that?
This is the articulated machine that we use for plowing sidewalks.
Okay, okay, it's not like the one that I could envision going up and down on Water Street doing the plowing, doing the mowing and doing the little, planting our trees and stuff like that, a machine similar to that, that we don't contract out and have that done and it would be a mower also?
Well, actually, the one, sorry, we presented two tractors in the Public Works presentation. One of them looked like an agricultural tractor with a bucket and a backhoe.
Yeah.
The other one was a picture of a trackless machine.
Okay.
That we use currently for plowing sidewalks.
I understand that one there, but I was thinking that this tractor, the tractors that they, well, let's just say the ones they sell out on the airport stretch and people have on a smaller scale that you would use in your parks and that. Well, I've seen them with the mowers on them also and with little plows that could plow narrow areas like we have on Water Street. We don't plow the sidewalks on Water Street and I think it's, if we can do that with one of these machines, if there was one that we could get, it should be looked at. I don't know if it'd be this year or whatever, but it should be, at least, see if the information and that machine is out there that we could look at because it's a problem on Water Street when you can't access your, you know, a beautiful part of town for walking or whatever during the winter time and not just Main Street and running, you're a runner, you know this, and other people that like to enjoy that walk along down through the trails that we have, they can't even access them. So, all I'm saying is if there's a machine out there that we could look at, that we could put on our inventory to do a multi-task works, then we ought to look at. And I don't know, I only know what I've seen out there on TV and so I have to believe that there are machines that can do what we need for them to do. Anyway, my question is to Dave about that.
Well, the machine I was looking at for parks was, well, I have a picture of it here, but it takes multi-use, takes multiple attachments for different, doing different whatever, augers, brooms, buckets, mowers and so on. But the problem with Water Street is that it's so narrow between the trees and whatever else is out there, fences and... and buildings and so on, that some of the areas are down to three feet. So, I don't think there's, I don't know if there's any plows up there that would be that small and still be...
It is, is all of this, all of these Water Street, there is a certain section of Water Street that are narrowed down to three feet. With the machine, you could use it on the left side, right side, to a certain, certain part where you might happen to have snow go wherever. I don't know. But, I mean, is this a shame that we have this beautiful infrastructure, that we can only have to use it in the, in the start on, and in the fall by the snows? You can't use it. And I think that, well, as I said before, we've been on and at it for about forty, fifty years. There's got to be a way, the fine way to be able to do this. I don't know what the answer is.
Can we... Danny, can we leave that with David Ernst and department?
He just said they have a machine that they can do that.
Ken?
To me, you don't need a machine. I think the problem is, I'm cranky because I've got it friggin' cold. We, we've screwed up on the waterfront. Let's, let's face it. Let's face it. Those bloody trees shouldn't have been put there in the first place. I mean, let's be frank. I'm a short little guy, and I walk, and there are times that the top of the trees brush the top of my head. So, I can imagine guys like Jeff or anyone taller than I am, they're being whacked by those things every time they walk, every time they run by. Dick Davis, my God, no wonder the man has concussions all the time just running the Water Street. I mean, the reality is, we get two options. We go out and we spend $150,000, $200,000 for something that's going to plow between the trees and the fence, or be proactive and dig the bloody trees up and put them somewhere. I mean, some of them are dead, or basically, they weren't planted that well anyway in the beginning. I mean, I go walk that all the time. That is not a good soil base there. I'm not sure who did the job. I'm not blaming Dave because he had nothing to do with it down there. That was another project or contract. But the reality is, why don't we look at getting those trees out of there? It's a, it was a lovely idea, but whoever picked those trees out did not realize that they are a low-growing tree that doesn't go to any great heights, and they droop down. I mean, they're, they're pretty as all get out, there's no question. But what we should be putting there is a long, thin, narrow tree that's going to go to a nice height, that could basically grow in any soil. Those things are cranky trees. I mean, with all due respect, they, they require a lot of work. You, I've got one in my yard. You got to trim them back, you got to work with the darn things. And I think if we can put something in, if Dave, I think as a second light, he should look at that and say, "Okay, what can we do here?" You got basically a hole in concrete. Once you get rid of the tree, you got a dirt mound in concrete. So, maybe we could put a little concrete vase in there that we can remove, like we talked about yesterday. Yeah, maybe we could just put a number of vases in there that would fit in that little hole, and put a little low-growing flower pot or a low-growing shrub that we could take and put behind our public works building. To me, it would be a lot cheaper to go out and spend and buy 30 flower pots and put it in there, and then move the bloody thing out in the fall, and then the plow can go and have a great time down there, do its thing in the winter. Because I drove down this morning, went down to pick up Danny this morning, went along Water Street. It's a crying sin. That's a lovely area to walk in the winter or to run in the winter, and we're not using it. And we can't use it. And with all due respect to poor David, he's been rattling his head out, trying to figure out how to get a piece of equipment between the tree and the fence. To me, it's simple. Get rid of the tree, put something else there. And we just have to, we have to suck it up. We, somebody made a mistake. Fix it.
Ken, I, I'm going to tease a little bit now, so I apologize in advance. You mentioned the word cranky earlier. So, maybe, maybe you, you worded that a little bit, but I, you mentioned two, two times. I want to move the discussion along and take that under advisement, and Dave will listen. And then maybe, at a certain point in time, there can be a discussion to begin to resolve, and I understand that too. I'm at the sewer plant five times a week. So, I, so I'm aware, very aware. So, let's move along in the discussion, Jerry and, and Dave and...
Dave, let me do something?
Dave, Dave is going to...
I don't want to paint you in a rant, nothing.
It's, it's actually on the waterfront development corporation's list of possible projects replacing those trees. They identified, I mean, they, they were the architects of that redevelopment of the waterfront, but they recognized that the trees are not ideal in terms of maintenance and all, and just use of the sidewalk. So, it's on their list, but, you know, they depend on us for funding as well as other levels of government. So, there's no clear timeline on that. It's, as far as the use, I mean, the use of the, of the sidewalk is, is an issue that we've talked about for years. And there are sections of the sidewalk, I think, that could be plowed with the equipment that we have, and maybe sections that can't. And those sections, you know, either we, either we acquire equipment to do them, or maybe we, maybe there's somebody in the private sector that has the equipment and we can contract out of a section. But we can, we can find a solution. We can find a solution. If, I mean, it, it, there are more businesses on Water Street now that, that rely on, on daily traffic as opposed to the industrial, you know, businesses that kind of manage everything on their own site. There's businesses like restaurants and fitness outlets and whatnot that, that depend somewhat on people being able to park and walk to their business. And we need to, if we want to grow the tax base, then it has to be, has to be more business-friendly. So, I'm sure, I'm sure that David can work out a, a solution for that.
I don't get it. Do you have a chainsaw today?
Where is that?
You'd be noticed then, Ken, for sure.
Dave's pretty good, get the chainsaw.
Yeah. Jerry, you're on. Still?
No problem. So, just to summarize, we have the, the first page basically equipment, sidewalks, and other, other things, I guess, that would fall under Dave's management. Second page kind of summarized all the different storm sewer, whether installations or extensions and improvements. And again, we, I kind of highlighted the ones that would go together. So, when, when talking with Dave, it'd be different pieces would be done first before, you know, it makes more sense. If there's numbers 26, 27, 28 would be done as a kind of one project, that 26 would be done before the other two pieces could be done or should be done.
Can you repeat that again?
So, in the second page, there's a bunch of sewer projects, and I highlighted like 26, 27, 28 are like, would be one, one project.
That's 29, they're, you're saying 26, 27, 28 would be... Is there like a light gray?
Yep. Yeah, in the black and white printer, there's different shades.
So, a light gray is a different thing, or is it?
No, no, they're just, they're just trying to group them together.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so there's three different groups on that page. So, again, talking with Dave, we tried to, tried to highlight different groups that would be done as, sort of as a project, and then put the different pieces in the right timeframe. So, again, like 26 for $800,000 would be done before 27 and 28 would be done. But that would be one piece.
Just about, I didn't see enough.
Yep.
Because it's so lighter.
Yeah, yes. So, these three would be one, one project.
Like we had copper.
Yeah, but this should be done before these two. These three are another project, 29, 30, 31, or you had 29 and 30 are a project. And again, just spreading the money out over the years. Okay?
Okay.
The final page is basically, everything else has to do with, was the Mariner Center, administrative things, fire department area, or the RCMP. So, I just summarized all the presentations and tried to put them into an annual timeframe, knowing that we have a budget of two, two and a half million dollars if gas tax is used. So, I, I put through with a first draft, went back with Dave basically and said, "Here's how it fits." So, we need to, at first draft, we had way too much money spent in the first two years. We have, were forced, based on money restrictions, to push some projects out. So, discussions with Dave, myself, and Jeff, this is kind of where we ended up. So, the rule of thumb is basically if we want to take a project that's out three years and move it back into year one, something in year one will be pushed back out because there's only so much money for each year. So, that's kind of what I've done and summarized on the Excel spreadsheet. Dave has looked at it, had to prioritize a few things in the meantime to get to this point. So, this is kind of our, our plan to counsel at this point.
Thank you, Jerry. Danny?
Thank you, your, your worship. My question is for Jeff. Jeff, the new announcements, federal announcements came up with gas tax and the, the long-term Canada Building Fund. I mentioned it before to you about paving and streetscaping. I read some of it again this morning and, and some of it the other day and listened to the news. I, I watch a lot of news, so I'm guilty of that. But there was a, some, some concern over the paving aspect and the, and the streetscapes for funding. I, I thought I read that. I don't know if I, if I understood it correctly. You're more in tune than I would be because you deal with figures, hopefully, and you want, you probably understand them a little more than I do, hopefully. And so, can I get your take on-
Yep.
-this building fund and where it leaves us with, with these, these desires? And I want to get back for a couple of questions afterward. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So, let me, I'll tell you what I know about the Build Canada Fund and the whole infrastructure initiative of the federal government. First of all, it's still under negotiation. We got a bulletin from FCM that I circulated last night to counsel that lays out the different components of it. One thing that I noticed in that is that there are, there are three tiers within the, the new Build Canada Fund-
Third, third, third?
Program. No, no. The, the top level is for, is for national scope projects. So, projects that are of national benefit and interest. And so, that's a huge portion of the funding. And obviously, those, those will go to maybe, you know, the major airports and, and major highways, trans-cated highway kind of work. Then there's another level, which is, which is kind of at a provincial scope. But within that, there are, there are categories of projects as well that I think trickle down to smaller communities. And they include things like wastewater and water projects among, among other things.
Transit?
Not sure about transit. I, I picked up on the water and wastewater.
Okay.
There's, there's a list of about 10, 10 categories. Then the third category, the smallest category in the whole, in the whole fund, is for what they call small communities. And it's, it's less money-
$570 million?
No, it's in the billions, but it's, it's less money than was available in the old Build Canada Fund. And it's defined as, as funds available for infrastructure for communities under 100,000 population. So, that's a bit of a concern to me, because we obviously fit, fit in that category-
Fit into that, yeah.
-as does every other community-
That's what I had read, yeah.
-except for Halifax within Nova Scotia. So, and, and think about across the country how many small rural communities with infrastructure needs there are. And so, that is the smallest portion of that program, and it's even smaller than it was under the old Build Canada Fund. Now, I'm heartened a little bit that there are categories at the next level up where there's more money for water, wastewater projects, because for instance, if we, if we were able to, to work stormwater in there, we have, we have a couple of, of projects in here worth about $3 million bucks.
Yeah.
Now, if we submit that to the Build Canada Fund, it may get taken out of that small communities fund, but it may also get taken out of the larger, the larger fund, which presumably would give us a better chance of getting it funded. So, right now, and I confirmed this yesterday with an official with the infrastructure secretary, the program is still under negotiation between FCM and the federal government. There is no intake of projects right now. But council, I think, has to make a decision and maybe give some direction on this. It's good to be in early. I don't expect there's going to be a lot of money in the first year. That's what our municipal advisor told us a month or so ago, is that we're looking at probably $6 million for the entire province the first year, but the second year, there will be a, a lot more money available. Now, if we get a project in that they can't fund the first year, I don't think that's the end of the world. Maybe, maybe they fund a phase of it, or maybe it's just in the, in the queue for the next year where the money actually, the bigger money-
Shovel ready, so to speak.
Sorry?
Shovel ready, so to speak?
Shovel ready. So, so the recommendation that I would make is that we determine if in fact those two, those two wastewater projects on page two of the presentation, they add up to about $3 million. It would be a huge-
Yeah.
-a huge project for the town. If we wanted to get that shovel ready, get it designed, get it ready for tender, submit it under the Build Canada Fund, and if we got two-thirds funding, that's $2 million. That frees up $2 million in our future years for, for paving projects or other projects-
Good.
-of interest to the town.
Yeah.
So, we could do it that way. Now, there is, there is another option. Obviously, there are other options. Council could decide that there are other projects that you'd rather submit to the Build Canada Fund. One of them that's highlighted here on, on the first page, but, but no specific year attached to it, is Pleasant Street reconstruction from Stars Road over to Forest Street. Okay? So, you could decide you want to submit that one under the Build Canada Fund. But I'm suggesting that you pick something in that order of magnitude. I would be more inclined to say the stormwater projects, because I think they're of a higher priority. At least, that's what staff is saying. And you could disagree, it's ultimately your choice. But we should give direction to staff to prepare a Build Canada application and submit it as soon as the intake opens up. And so, that, that's, that's what I know about Build Canada.
Okay. Dave, if you had a, if you had a to-do list, which you have here, and if you were recommending to council the things that should be done sooner than later, and you could get away with, hopefully, if it comes, that we could get half done this year and half done the next year with funding, what would be your picks? And I don't want to put you on the spot to do this, but it, it is, it is here before us. And you've had probably this wish list for a number of years. So, what would you recommend to council? I, I don't know what's the need out there. You, as the professional, know, know the need that we have to take upon ourselves to do this and, and do it, not years down the road, because we know what happened to our dam over the three years that we waited to do that. It did nothing but escalate of the cost. So, and I'm just throwing that in, just so everybody realizes that. The longer you wait, the more that it costs. So, what would be your recommendation, Dave? I'd be interested to hear.
Well, either parade Brunswick Street or Cliff Street, Hawthorne Street bundled together. Those, those two, 26, 27, 28, or 29, 30, depending on how much money's available out there. Those can be bundled and designed and ready to go.
So, you would recommend from 26 to 32? Yeah. And those would take in what we discussed in the back shop there some time ago, would tie in a lot of the loose ends and a lot of the super infrastructure that needs to be done? Well-
Well, it's a start.
It's a start. Yeah, I, I understand that. It, it is a start. But you would, as, as the towns engineer, the professional person would say, this would be, if I had a wish list, this would be something that I would do. Well, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. So, with that in mind, I was looking, I was looking at you. You had your light on earlier, and you turned it off. Sorry about that. Thank you, Danny.
Did you hear that?
I look over, see Phil.
Is it his light or her?
Yeah, I see Phil's on. Phil's light is on. Looks like we should have a motion to approach the Build Canada Fund for, and be shovel ready, as was described by both yourself, Danny, and Jeff. And I'm all in favor of something like that. I think that's, that's a good business to, to, and so that we are ready if there is a chance. Phil first, and then, and then Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave, and I think the one I'm most concerned about, and it's probably the one that's, one of the cheapest ones on the paper, is the diflow study for Argyle Street. So-
What number?
That would be number, looks like number 11, I think.
That's an infiltration inflow study. It's more than a diflow study.
Yeah, but-
Like that, you got to start there to be able to know where you want to go.
That's right. And I, and I think, Mr. Chair, and I think, I know we've had concerns around the table, especially from councillor Dawes, and from the residents in Argyle Street. I think it'd be prudent for us to do that one this year, Mr. Chair. I think it's important. It'd be a first step, the Argyle Street, the, the diflow study for Argyle Street. And like Dave said, it's the first step on finding out what's going on.
I just did one thing, I'm sorry. I have, I just, I only picked this up. I'm not a spoiling pastor, the 23, 24 thing-
Yeah.
-that we're dealing with now. I've got the- I'm looking at the shovel ready for this, we're interested in this.
Yeah, and Dave said this is the first step because that Build Canada Fund's probably going to go over a multi-year process, so I'd like to see that probably be one of my priorities.
Could I clarify?
We got lights on, so I could let Jeff speak.
Just to clarify, in the columns, the first column, 1314, is this current fiscal year? That's already been approved?
Yeah.
All right?
Well, that's already been approved.
That's already been approved. And some of that work's already been done. So 1415 is the year that we're looking for you to make the earliest decision on, and so the di-test inflow infiltration study is in that year.
Good.
So that's in the year coming up, April 1st. So that's the column that is the soonest budget we want you to...
1415?
1415.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Sandy.
Okay, the one that I really like, but it's not in the group, but it's showing for 2014, 15, is the Green Street Storm Sewer Extension. Is that something that if the budget's approved, that we'll get started right away? Number 20, number 33.
33, yeah.
Well, it's included in this year, yes. It's got to be designed first, but that's the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Ken.
Okay, a couple of things discussing on the, and just help me out here, Jeff. Where's this wastewater thing at?
Sorry?
The wastewater thing you're referring to at, where's that at? What line are we looking at?
26 to 32.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The stormwater.
The stormwater? Okay. Looking at that, a couple of things. I mean, we've been bandying this around. I know we talked about putting this under Build Canada. I have a problem with that. I really think that we should be, we talked about this already, I'd like to see us get this wastewater plant under the water utility or get these things separated like what the other areas are doing. There was some discussion around the council table about looking at merging these into one separate utility like they have in Halifax. I really think that's a proactive way because it becomes then a buyer, a payer, a user-payer facility. Personally, I, in looking at it, we've got issues with our water, we've got issues with our wastewater on the dollar value. And to me, to have the overall taxpayers pay for a service where maybe certain people are benefiting more so than others, I'd like to see the user-pay formula go in there. And wastewater and water, to me, is one area where I'd like to see that happen. The other reality is, and I brought this up before, is our wastewater plant is getting up there. And I know it's good till 2030, basically, we're good to 2030, but I mean, 2030 isn't that far away. And I really like to see where we're going in that direction. With a shovel-ready project, I personally would prefer us look at more at the infrastructure idea, as Phil was talking about in some respects, the Argyle Street, the actual, as Danny would say, you know, sidewalks, things along that line. Would love to see that involved. We have discussed, we knew this build fund was coming up, we know it's there. I would love to see us put more money into our infrastructure, if at all possible, especially our paving, our sidewalks, et cetera. And I don't know creatively how we can do it. Now, maybe under the Build Canada Fund or under whatever the P3 Fund, we could look at doing something more dramatic for our wastewater plant. That's point one. Point two, we're playing with a $2.5 million budget. Not to give Jerry or you a stroke, Jeff, but I wouldn't be too upset about us even going out and borrowing a little money here. And I mean, we need some serious facelifts in some parts of this town that we just aren't doing. I mean, we're bandaging $250,000 for paving, with all due respect, is a joke. I mean, it's nothing. I mean, God love Dave, he's stretching himself to the limit here, but this town looks like a patchwork quilt. You know, really. I mean, the reality is. I would, I don't know. I don't know what other councillors feel, and I know we're short numbered, Madeline's not here, and the mayor's not here. But really, I really think we should look at saying, okay, what can we do here? How can we gussy this place up a little bit? Nothing's really changed that dramatic. Would it be in order to look at an overall capital improvement loan, to simply say, okay, we are going to tackle this, 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 and this now, rather than wait? Because as Danny, my esteemed comment, Danny would say, you know, there's some things that we need really badly. There are some streets in this town that look like something out of third-world countries that we really, I mean, and Dave, with all due respect to Dave and his staff, they've done the omen service in trying to fix the situation up, but I really, and I hate to see us add to debt load, but in some respects, I think we may have to bite the bullet here in hopes of better times ahead. I don't know. So I'm just throwing that out for discussion.
Jeff.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. On the wastewater utility, we did, two years ago, did the study that told us what the rates would have to be, just set it up as a self-sufficient operation. We're in year two of the implementation of that rate, that phase in. It was a five-year phase in, so at the fifth year, we'll actually be at that point. And when we began to implement that, what we suggested to council is that let's fully implement that, and let's take stock and decide if we want to make it a utility, a part of the water utility, or leave it as a cost center of the, or service center of the town of Yarmouth. So I would urge us to stay the course on that one because we are only in year two of an implementation of a five-year, and let's see how that goes. The rates, I'm going to suggest, were done in exactly the same way as we would do them if we were taking it to the utility review board and probably be approved at the same level. So as far as a burden on the taxpayer versus a user pay, I don't think it's a different scenario. It's just a different governance structure at this point. So I'd urge we stay the course on that. In terms of the Build Canada Fund, the reason why I would urge that we consider the wastewater, or sorry, the stormwater projects over, for instance, just paving, is that when I read the information that came from FCM yesterday, it did put certain categories of projects above the Small Communities Fund, and I think there's a chance that we could tap into a larger fund to get that approved, and then that frees up some of our own money going forward to do things like paving, which would have to come under the Small Communities Fund. So it's a, where do I think our best bet is in terms of getting the funding? I'd say stormwater versus just paving. I would, I'd remind you and urge patience in terms of the infrastructure situation in the town around the paving. And I'll put it in this kind of context, is I don't disagree with the condition of some of our roads. I drive on them too, and they're bumpy and they're patchwork and so on. But they didn't get that way overnight. They got that way over decades of being underfunded in terms of maintenance and replacement. We've been working for the last eight years now on a plan where we are funding our depreciation and putting more money into capital in the infrastructure, you know, pound for pound, more than any other municipality that we've been able to identify. So we're the only one in Nova Scotia that's funding our depreciation, and we're not putting that money in reserve, we're plowing that money right back in the infrastructure. So if paving is a higher priority than some of the other things, that's what this process is about, is saying more money here and less money there, move this forward, move that backward. That's your role and your prerogative. I don't encourage borrowing for something that isn't an emergency and is something that we're managing and are able to manage within our own resources because we don't know what's coming around the corner. We know that the wastewater treatment plant will need an upgrade in 2030. We know that, you know, it'll probably need some upgrades just to maintain the primary level of treatment before we get to that time. So those are situations where if we can't handle them in the current fiscal year, then I would come to council and say, let's borrow for that project. So I tend to be a little more conservative in my approach. I don't make these decisions. You folks do. Our job's to give advice and to give you options, and you guys make the decisions.
Dave, and then Danny.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on, we really don't want to go do a bunch of paving where we don't upgrade the underground infrastructure first, otherwise it's a waste of money. And I've been trying to be very careful in paving streets that I do, that I don't have to upgrade the underground infrastructure. So I have to look at that first. We can upgrade the paving with these projects. We can include reconstruction of the whole street, if you like, in that manner. That way, it's a complete, it's a complete project.
That's good. That's good.
Curb to curb as well as underground. But you pay a cost too, so.
We pay a cost if you don't.
Yeah, to get it done.
Yeah.
But that can be included in the projects.
I think that that should be.
And don't forget as well that the water utility in some of those streets, we'll have to look at the water distribution system as well, and if that needs to be upgraded at the same time, then we'll have to, the water utility, you'll have to pay for that portion of it, so.
So that's good. I think if you're going to do something, you worship my honor, I feel that if you're going to do it, then you do it all at one step, one step only. You don't go back and do it again. It doesn't make any sense, and you're absolutely right.
And what we did on Pleasant Street.
That's right. That's right. And kudos to you for saying that, and you know, that's good, and that's what we need to know around this table. My question, I've listened to the CAO, and I've listened to the CAO for a few years now. And...
I've been deteriorating.
Yeah, I have. I have, yeah. Anyway, Dave.
I should think or something.
Yeah. Dave, $250,000 for paving doesn't seem like a hell of a lot of money.
It doesn't go very far, but our perspective was at the time that we'd put that in every year and pick away at, because prior to Jeff coming here, we didn't do much paving at all. I didn't do any capital work for five years because I didn't have any money to do.
From a pre-assessment, yeah, I worked on him also.
He was having a miss on paving projects.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm asking, and what I'm asking the CAO, and what I'm asking you, $250,000, I'm just driving around town like a lot of us and a lot of people. I don't hear nothing about people having problems flushing toilets and drainage system other than Argyle Street, but they do have lots of problems with the streets in the town of Yarmouth. Now, I know we've done a lot of work on different parts of town, which are great. Not all of Main Street is bad, and I said it was before, but not all of it is bad. There's some places where, on the sides of the streets, that some of the drains I had mentioned before are not brought up to the same level as the pavement itself. Some of those you've got to watch. And there's a lot around town. But I'm just picking different things, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, $250,000 is not a lot of money. Would you like to see that increased? Because, especially this year, this year I've noticed, and you probably have too, that there's a lot of pavement that is leaving us. I mean, there's a lot of that's breaking up and busting up all over town.
That's a lot, it's been dug out of the ground.
Yeah, I understand that, Dave. I understand that. So I guess what I'm saying is, I know it's set for $250,000, but I think with our climate changing and all the other good stuff that's happening, and the work that we're going along, do you think it should be added a little bit more money, like we'll say, $300,000 or $350,000? I don't know. I would like to see it go up at least that high. And not to say that you're going to pave all of Yarmouth with $350,000 or $400,000, but you can do a lot of good maintenance work till we get around to doing those streetscapes, like digging them up, replacing what we have to replace, and only you know that better than I do. I drive on them like other people in the town of Yarmouth, and a lot of people are not happy. I'm not happy when you drive and you hit these holes, these potholes. Sometimes some of these streets would be better probably dug them up and buy a grader and have them graded again. Some of them are that bad.
Some of them don't even have proper bases under themselves.
Yeah, and there we go again. So that's why I say...
I'd love to have more money, but...
Yeah, I know. No, and I'm trying to say that, Dave. You know, it doesn't mean that, okay, you've got $350,000, you say, well, I'm going to pave just this section here. You know, we always run into problems digging up and whatever, whatever happens in our streets and that, because they're old, and a lot of them don't have good bases. One in particular didn't have a good base till they dug it up was Geddes Lane, and that cost probably twice the amount that you figured it would cost, because they had to dig up the whole thing because the base wasn't there. And they didn't realize it till they started digging different sections, and bang, and Geddes Lane is the lane that I live on. So anyway, I'd just like to see more money, if at all possible. And my question would go now to Jeff or the Finance Department. And that is my question.
Thank you, Danny.
Certainly possible. It's just a matter of making the choice. Like I say, we can put any number you want into paving, but know that other projects will have to be deferred if you want to do that. I'm working with a certain amount of money in each fiscal year at this point. So if you want to increase that budget by $250,000, we need to take something in this column for 1415 worth $250,000 and push it back out a year or two.
Okay, Dave, I got Sandy on the go, too.
Just one more quick question.
Go ahead. Turn your light on.
Excuse me. If the unforeseen happens, that there does need to be pavement put down because of the, had to dig the road up, or whatever, you need another $50,000 or $100,000, or let's say $50,000 to lay that pavement down because of whatever, where do you get that money from? We are not taking it from these projects. Where do you find the money?
If there's...
Because I don't want to take from here and postpone anything for another year when we have, you know, different things going on. I'm not saying that we're going to, you know, pave everything with $50,000. We're not going to do that. But I'm just saying, maybe it won't be this year, maybe perhaps down the road to do it. But if you need $50,000 extra to do work, where do you get it from?
We look at something that's not been done, that's been budgeted to be done and defer it, or we'd have to come to council and say, we need to take some money out of reserves to get it done.
Like we do with the mayor, he said we need some new computers, whatever, the heat moniter, the heat factor, or generators, or the World Top of Shine, or whatever.
Yep.
Thank you, Danny and Jerry. Sandy.
I'm not sure how everybody would feel about this, but I'm wondering if we could take $50,000 off of the town hall, yeah, town hall office renovations and put it onto paving.
So we're going to have, maybe have some discussion. I see one light on. Ken.
Well, I'm a little mixed on this one. I'll tell you, as I pointed out earlier, I am concerned on line 13, the decorative lighting on Main Street, Forest, to Argyle, and we're pushing that ahead to 1516. Personally, I don't know how we can do it, but I would love to see us, at least, I mean, I'm looking at this again, and this budget list, and I've looked at these, this is my fourth year looking at a, fifth year now, looking at a budget list. And with all due respect, I see a lot of center town and north end. And I realize the infrastructure's probably needed there a lot, and I know there's probably explanation for it, and I'm not going to get into that, but I really, really would love to see us do something along Main Street in Yarmouth, especially with the tourism season coming up. And we're not looking, I don't think, at a lot of money here, but to me, we either go down there and take out those bloody iron stakes that have been sitting there for 25 years and forget it, or forget about them, and just say, no, we're not going to put anything up there or do it. The people of Yarmouth South have been waiting for something for 20 years. And, you know, we discussed this around this table earlier this year. I know we brought it up, Danny and I both brought it up. I don't know how we can do it, but I really would love to see us put something. I'd love to see us start on that because we've got the new justice center there, we've invested heavily in the skate park, which I think is good. It would be so nice to do some attractive lighting in that area to make it, make Yarmouth South seem part of the town because it's, you know, I don't know what we can do, but anyway, I just wanted to mention that. I'd like to see us, to me, the town hall renovations, this town hall is a tired building. Sandy, I hear your point. However, we are seeing the town hall being used more and more for civic events. However, we are seeing the town hall being used more and more for civic events. And I mean, I'm looking at this carpet in this room, and the carpet in the, the back room, and it's, it's really quite appalling. I mean, we, it's, when we had the governor general here, poor Jeff, it was an embarrassment. We had to scurry around and put tiles in mayor's office and.
Match chairs.
We had to match her chairs. It, it was something out of, you know, Dog Patch movie, you know? It was really not, not pleasant. I mean, we kinda looked at it. We really need to put a, if we're gonna, if we're gonna instill confidence in our community, this building is the symbol of our community. It is our symbol. And when you walk into this building, you want future businesses to say, wow, this is a successful town, this is a prosperous town, this is a good town, because this is where they're gonna come. This is where premiers, kings, emperors, and prime ministers come in. And you want to have that good impression. And I don't know, and I agree with you, Sandy, the 50,000 in paving, it's a good idea, and I'd love that, but somehow, I, I think their bang for the buck may be to finish the job here, and I know Jeff and his staff have worked hard without it. So I, I would, I would really push to get that project going, get it done, and moving somewhere else. You know, he may not spend it all, he's pretty frugal, and so, I mean, he may not, but I, I really feel we, we need to invest in this building, you know? Definitely it's gotta be done. We've done the roof, minus that shingle, but other than that, we're fine.
Phil and then Danny.
Yeah, and thank you, Chair.
I'll, I'll turn, you want me to turn mine, I'll turn mine off for now.
Thank you, thanks.
Yeah, and we're gonna have lots of options, and I can see there's gonna be lots of discussion over the next several weeks with this, with this set of, with the wish list here, but I have to agree with Councilor Landell. I think the town hall probably should be done because just got the roof done, all you have to do is look in the back corner there. There could be mold issues over there, Jim, where your sister sat for over 20 years. We need some work in there, or we need some work out in the lobby where there's been some, where some rain. I know Jeff, a few times, we've been in the, the video room when the water's been coming down, we've had garbage bags over the top of the video equipment. Councilor Landell's right, I think the town hall's gotta be done, especially in light that we've done, we've bit the bullet, we did the roofs, let's do that. And I think the other one is, is, I've mentioned it several times, is I think the lighting, the lights going down to Argyle Street, I'd like to see that done. That's been long overdue. I know Gary Leach, when he was sitting at council, they put up the, the metal posts there so that, to get them ready to get in the ground. And I don't know if you're sitting at the table or not, Jim, when that happened, but I think that would show a sign that we want businesses going up and down Main Street, and I think that would be a great addition. And especially, you know, we've, we've put some money into the justice center, the skateboard park, you know, they got some nice businesses down in Yarmouth South now with the Hair Hut, you know, Ralph's done a nice job with the Red and White, Freddie Eames, you know, all, all through there. Cindy's gone in there with the aesthetics shop down there at the old school, with the old academy, so let's make them feel part of the community, and for the amount of money, I know we're gonna have a lot of decisions to make over the next couple of weeks, like I said, but I think that would give us a good bang for the buck visually, and it'd probably be a little upbeat down there for those, for those parts of our business community that are, have their stores from Forest Street down to Argyle Street, so that's just my thoughts. And I know we'll have lots of ideas between now and then.
Thank you very much. Jerry.
Yeah, just a quick suggestion, I guess. I know, I hear Main Street and I hear paving. One thing to remember on the paving part is the first three items, those are there so we can do a lot more of the patching and better job on the patching, so help smooth our streets out a bit. And as far as the, the lighting goes down on Main Street, another option, I mean, I'm just looking at what's slated, what's in the column for 1415. Relatively speaking, the YMCA parking lot could maybe be pushed back and put the lights back in, so.
We have to patch it with the patch.
Like I say, that's, that's kind of why those first three are there, as far as, you know, based on our discussions from a few weeks ago, that that would help us with our patching and put in a better job, and things wouldn't crumble as fast on our patches, so.
I'm okay at this point. Danny.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Jerry, because that's when I walked over and talked to Councilor Mooney and suggested just that, what you just said about the YMCA parking lot. I mean, it's not gonna, it hasn't collapsed yet, and, and I don't think it would be for another year. But living and representing the town of Yarmouth, I, I live in the south end of Yarmouth, have been and had businesses all my life in the south end of Yarmouth, but I don't represent south end of Yarmouth. And I'm glad to hear when counselors bring up like Sandy and, and Ken and, and Phil and, and the other counselors bring up issues in the south end of Yarmouth. I mean, it, it warms my heart when they do that, because we're not forgotten down there. Now, I, I do bring up a lot of things about the south end area, but I also bring a lot of things up about the Center Town and Milton area, because I represent all of Yarmouth, not only one, one part. So getting back to the YMCA parking lot, it would be a good idea to postpone it for one year. I, I don't see any harm in that unless somebody sees something else that I, that I don't see. I don't park there a whole art, a lot, so I, I really don't know. I know that it need, it needs work, it needs a lot of work, but I don't think one year postponement would make a big difference, but that's just my opinion. And that would free up $100,000 for this project down there, because you know it's gonna run a little over the 65 grand, Dave, I would suggest.
It's 130, yeah.
130.
I split it because I was trying to juggle things around to make.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, so anyway, that frees up $100,000 for that, and I'm sure that $30,000, I don't know, I'm not speaking for Jeff or the finance, finance department, but he just come up with an idea of $100,000, which I was looking all along, to see that lighting be put in for this year would be great. I'm sure that we could find the other $30,000 somewhere, along the line here somewhere, and I'll leave that up to Jerry's imagination and Jeff's imagination, but I'd be all for that, and I'll leave it at that.
So we're having a, a good back and forth discussion. Does anybody else have anything else to offer, comment?
I just want to say that $50,000 of paving is gonna, not gonna make any much of difference because it doesn't go for 100,000 would be helpful, but 50,000.
I guess, I guess.
You wouldn't notice it in a street, really.
I guess my comment, generally speaking, is that I hear comments obviously about our own streets, but I hear comments about other streets and other towns and villages, and we're, we're in better shape than those communities are that I've spoken to, you know? And not to say that we, we don't deserve attention, our streets don't deserve attention, but I know, and I get, I get it almost, I wouldn't say daily, but once or twice a week at the breakfast table when someone's gone into a bit of a pothole on Forest Street or Main Street somewhere, so you have to live with that and you just have to be careful. And we, that's the good and the bad of living in a small area, small rural area. So at this point, I take direction from, I guess Phil wants to say something.
Dave, say town hall's the starting point, without doing any underground work, any piping, anything else, how far would $50,000 of paving go from here going that way?
Well, I couldn't give you lengths, but I don't know if you've been on Marcy Avenue. We were gonna patch that this past year.
Yeah.
Couldn't patch it, didn't know where to start nor to stop, so we had to basically rebuild it because the base was gone. That section that we did was pro, over 50,000, I think it's probably 70 or 80.
Okay.
And that's not very far.
No.
Jerry's on the job and another, back in his office. Any more discussion?
Okay, so what do we do? Is this the time to move this $100,000 from one part to the other part? Then if it is, I so move that we move the $100,000 from the YMCA parking lot for this year and bring it up to 1615, 16, the year of 1516, and take the 100,000 and put it into the lighting and the decorating lighting on Main Forest to Argyle Street. I so move.
Any more discussion, question? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded.
Thank you, your worship.
Motion carried. Thank you, Danny.
What I'd, so that's $100,000 that we can put towards, put towards the decorative lighting. We can't, no, I can't tell you where the other 30 will come from today unless you have an idea. Yeah, if you want to, if you wanna work the other 30 into this current, or this next fiscal year, we can work on that. I mean, I see, I don't know what Dave thinks about the portable screener pushing that back a year.
We can do that.
Yeah, so that, that could find you 35, which would give you the balance of the, of the lighting project.
The portable screener, item, item seven. That'd be honorable to me.
That'd be honorable to you.
Yeah.
There's a motion to do, what's been suggested to move the portable screener, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion, motion carried.
We're moving into 1516.
They were moving in, moving.
Question.
No, that was passed.
I don't think, we haven't voted on it yet, no. Don't get excited, Jim, we haven't voted yet.
No, I just.
I, okay.
She was asked.
Yeah.
Question.
Question. No, I'm with it, I, I, thank you. All of her, please say aye. Contrary minded, motion carried, thank you. Ken.
Thank you, Jim. The 58, Main Street bump oats, Dave's got that in there. I see we've got that looking for 2015, 16. Dave, that cost off 250,000. We were kinda toying around that yesterday morning, not suggesting we move it. Phil and I were chatting about the idea of putting that in our ask to the province, putting that 100,000 ask in. That costing for that bump oat, Dave, is, is that just a random figure, or knowing you you had to?
Where is it costing?
We're looking at line 58, Main Street bump oats.
That's from the waterfront.
Okay, that's from the waterfront development is where that's from?
It is, it's based on, just a general estimate.
Okay.
We wouldn't do a ton of bump oats, we'd do some bump oats, so it's just pumping up a little bit.
Well, I, I missed yesterday's meeting, so I got a lot, a lot of catching up, so I understand. I called Councilor Landell last night, was talking about what took place yesterday at the meeting and that, and anyway, he suggested something that I gave for his committee and the.
That was, we're talking with bump.
The bump, the bump oats and stuff, but these neat things that we've seen in, in St. Andrews by the sea there, St. Andrews, were, I think that they were, they were pots, but big pots, and they had trees in them, they had different shrubbery, different flowers and everything in them, and they were beautiful, they were beautiful. And I said, doesn't that affect your street plowing in that, in, in the, in the wintertime? They said, no, we take these from our sidewalks and we bring them to a secure place, and we put them away for the winter, out of, out of the weather and harm's way. But these aren't concrete, these were sort of a cast iron, or so, so to speak, and they had different designs on them, so they wasn't, they wasn't cement or anything like that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with cement, but we had cement things here on our streets years ago. They didn't go over too big, they wasn't, they wasn't very tasteful. I don't know what this council is getting mind or what the Blooms and Blooms got, but these, I have pictures of them, I think I do at home, of these big steel things, cast iron or iron, whatever they were, and they were really nice, and they looked really rustic. They were really nice, and they were placed in all along the main, main drags of Main Street, and it was a part of their greenscape. They didn't have to borel, burrow down underground or worry about anything like that. And so anyway, I, I'll bring them in, Jeff, if I can find them, I'll see my wife if she can find them and bring those in. You should have another option other than cement or whatever. I'm sure there's different things out there that would beautify our downtown and Water Street, other than the trees that are only three to four feet apart on Water Street. Water Street got a lot of unique problems in, in, in walking and running, and even walking to, to a breast, and that's only one of them. But I think if we had that same kind of idea on the Water Street area, it would be great, where we can take all this stuff up in the winter and be able to access more of our roads and walkways. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that, bring that to light, that there are things out there other than cement and other things out there, so that's just my little, little talk there.
Thank you, Danny. Are we reaching, are we nearing the end or reaching the end of our discussion this morning? Jeff.
Okay, so what we're, what we're looking for is by the, by the March council meeting, to be able to approve the capital budget, if not, if not sooner. So if you're, if you're satisfied with it, I mean, you don't have to make any, any recommendation today, we're gonna be meeting again next week, but that's something for you to think about, is if, if the, if the numbers in the 1415 column are suitable, you're acceptable to you, then a recommendation to council to, to accept the, the capital budget for 2014, 15 is what we're looking for. Again, take it, and, and if you're not comfortable making the decision today, make it, make it next week or give us some direction on, on what you'd like us to do further.
I so make that a motion, your worship, that we accept the 14.
I so make that a motion, your worship, to make the 2014, 2015 capital budget.
For approval.
I make a motion for approval to the council of the next meeting.
Committee and council, yeah, council of the whole, seconded by Ken Landell.
With the, with the emissions.
With, with, with.
Yeah, okay, with the changes.
Changes.
With the changes, yeah, excuse me, with, with the changes that's we, were placed before us.
Are we ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Perhaps a motion for adjournment? Oh, no, 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 I apologize, Ken.
Grant store organization spreadsheet, if we could get that before the committee of the whole, I won't be here at committee of the whole next week, so I wanna take a look at that before in case there's some questions. So just send it up to us when, sometime next week before the meeting, just in case, and I can pass my comments on.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ken, and thank you, everybody. Motion for adjournment?
That is adjourned. That was actually my man.
Okay, oh, sorry, it did.
Yeah, well, that did. Yeah, but those are, I, I knew we, I knew we'd do it, I knew we'd do it. Those are them, there, Jim.